Let's open this meeting at 6:30. First, we have public input. Seeing that there is none, we will go on to the student report and we have Samantha. Is it, do you prefer Samantha or Sam? Samantha Galvin, class of 2020 with the student report.
All right, hello everyone. So I'm just gonna jump right in with the recent academic matters. AP registration opened last Monday, February 4th, and many teachers are hosting their own practice AP exams in preparation for those in March and April. The three honor essays for graduation have been identified and they also received the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Excellence. That was Michael Tyrell, Molly Pfeffer, and Samantha Martel. Academic decathlon placed, scored a number of medals in topics ranging from optics to 1960s social science to Bob Dylan lyrics in their competition against Acton Boxborough on February 2nd. And juniors have decided the course selection process, juniors have started the course selection process for next year through their Plus Portal accounts and sophomores and freshmen will be starting that process as well in the coming weeks. Moving on to sports, registration for spring sports is starting through family ID now that fall sports are coming to a close. Both boys and girls track won the Cape Ann League Championship with several athletes going on to compete in states. Girls came out on top with a score of 78.5 points, and the boys as well. Girls basketball is one win away from making it to states and both girls and boys basketball are having their senior games this week. And the boys' basketball team is hosting a Burgers for Benefits fundraiser tonight at Fudd Ruckers from 5:00 to 8:00 PM in Redding inside John Oates Furniture. Junior wrestler Sean McCullough won the 182 Division II Title Feb, Division II Title on February 10th. And swim team also had many victories. They competed at sectionals at MIT on Saturday, February 9th and Molly Pfeffer, Melanie Pfeffer, Christina Valenti, Ali Grabar, Brianna Saunders, and Nicole Steinmeier all qualified for states, which will be held next Saturday at BU, I believe. Going on to fine arts, Notorious is competing in the ICHSA competition on February 16th at Danvers High School. And they're performing their competition set at a free concert during Second Power Block in the Performing Arts Center on February 13th, which is something unique to this year. Students don't, other students don't normally get the opportunity to see their shows. And Masters is competing their show March 2nd, right here in the Performing Arts Center, and they're doing a public performance of The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe at 6:30 on February 24th. Tickets are $5 and that will allow you to see our show and Wakefield High School's Other important information is the date for junior prom has been set for April 5th. And at the 2019 Harvard Model United Nations Trip, Michael Tyrell won an honorable mention award in the AD 1,227 Mongol Empire. Fourteen other students, including myself, had the opportunity to attend the conference held at the Sheraton Hotel in Boston, which was a really fun, amazing experience. Adventure Club is hosting a whitewater rafting trip June 9th. And finally, Student Council combined forces with Ms. Carter to sell cupcakes for Valentine's Day to raise money for both Ms. Carter's class and for the Student Council. Today, for my example of student work, I brought a physics project. The goal was to create a car out of paper, straws, little wheel pasta for the wheels, and tape. And the goal was to create a car with a sufficient enough crumple zone so that way the egg wouldn't crack when it went down the ramp and each time we would raise the ramp. So we were basically designing the crumple zone with the impulse momentum theorem in mind. So it was combining engineering and the physics formulas that we had learned. And it was a pretty cool experiment because you always see that little project on like TV and we got to actually do it in class. So I have some pictures of the car in here.
How'd your egg hold up? Did you succeed?
We succeeded in every trial but the last one because our seatbelt came unchatted.
Oh, no.
The eggs flew out when it hit, even though the car didn't break.
So they must have had a recall on that model of the car then for that, that year. Good job.
My kind of student report, there's pictures.
Yeah, exactly.
I have another question and it could be for you or Mr. Bernard. When, when the students choose their classes using the, what is it, the Plus Portal? Is there like, is the limit set on the numbers that can sign up or do, can as many sign up as you want, as want to sign up of course, and it's decided if you're gonna have one section, two sections?
Correct.
Is that how it works?
Yes, there's no limit on the number additionally.
So it's not like in college where the student just gets, wants to reach a certain number, they get, they get shut out?
Right, and then the sections would be divided appropriately by the number of students that expressed interest in that class.
Okay.
The only other thing I would add is I went to the middle school performance of Addams Family, which is very good. My, uh, my family loved it. My kids were watching other ones on YouTube afterwards and my son just kept saying, oh, ours was way better, there was way more people involved in it. Because there was like a hundred kids in the production and so.
That's part of it.
It was, like, there was kids everywhere and they were dancing, so it was fun.
I just couldn't get over the artistic, everything that they, they produced from the singing, dancing, the backdrop. That backdrop looked like it was professionally done and they hand painted it themselves, if I remember correctly. So it was just, they did a very good job.
One other thing I wanna, two other things actually on sports. The girls' basketball team actually won again, so they, they're qualified for the states now. And the girls' hockey team with Peabody and Linfield is also qualified for the state tournament.
Nice.
So it's been a good, good winter season.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
You say that every time and no one ever stayed.
Well, I think Michael did there for a couple of minutes because he had another presentation to do.
Right, right.
Next, we have a presentation from the representatives of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School, and I will hand it over to Mr. Bernard to pronounce their names correctly.
So, Madam Chairman, thank you. I'm honored to introduce to all of you tonight, and many of you have seen Judy Diamond, who is North Reading's representative to the Northeast Regional School Committee. Judy, thank you again for coordinating your folks to come tonight and speak to the, to the committee and the community about what's going on at your school. And also with Judy is Dave DeBarry, who's in the middle, he's the superintendent director at the vocational school, and Jay Piccone is the finance director. So thank you to both of you for, for joining Judy. So I think, without too much in the way of introduction, I think what, what might be most beneficial for, for the committee is to just hear where things are with you folks in terms of your school building project and any other information, Madam Chairman, correct, that, that folks think you, you know, you would wanna highlight for the school and, and maybe with an eye toward a North Reading focus specifically. And before you go Judy, I do just wanna say publicly that I appreciate very much the work that, that Mr. DeBarry did with me back a few months ago when we were looking to engage the vocational school students in the construction of some, some softball dugouts at our new softball field, where we're optimistic that that project has not been permanently shelved, where we're looking to maybe move forward with that project at a later date. But while we didn't move forward on the timeline that we had hoped initially, I appreciate very much the cooperation that I got from, from Mr. DeBarry on, on behalf of that project and the interest that, that North Reading had, so thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I think, I think our hope might be to have something at this June town meeting.
That is a hope.
That's the hope.
A funding.
And if we do get funding this June town meeting, then move forward next, next fall.
We received some very impressive drawings, you know, computer-generated architectural drawings.
Plans were perfect. Everybody on the athletic subcommittee was, was supportive of the plans, so it's just a matter of finding the, finding the money to get the materials, so. But hopefully that'll happen.
Hopefully coming soon.
All right, great.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And if that doesn't work out, I need to shed, so.
No, you better look in your ethics book there, Scott, I don't think that's allowed.
Well, we'd like to thank you for the invite again. I mean, I can't believe it's been a year already.
I know.
And you still look very good, John, you're still very young.
I haven't lost any more hair.
We always take great delight in spreading the word about the wonderful works that's being done at our school and the success, and I know you're all very anxious to have an update from Mr. Piccone as far as where we are with the new school project. And it's funny you mention the baseball field because Dave keeps me, you know, up to date on everything. We just, we're talking about that tonight and I was very disappointed that, that was not moving forward. I couldn't understand that. So, and I'm very happy to hear that and you're, you're still on our list and we'll keep you there, so hopefully it, it works.
What happened was that our, our athletic revolving fund is probably gonna end up with about $14 in balance this year because we had some increased costs in other areas. One of the big ones was we had a large participation in girls' hockey this year and we have to pay their, their, the fees to Peabody, and that kinda ate up a lot of the funds we were hoping to use and there really wasn't, with the way the budget's looking, there really wasn't any way we could, you know, make it work.
We get that, it happens to us too.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a, we, we try to do those type of community projects and I think we keep the, the cost as low as possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And believe me, our students take great pride in those projects.
Right.
So hopefully.
Right, that's why we're, that's why we're looking forward to hopefully getting it done this June at town meeting.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing about that. Anyway, at this point, I'm sure you probably wanna hear more about the new school project. I'll turn that over to Mr. Piccone and then Mr. DeBarry has some great new things that we're doing that he can discuss too. But feel free to ask any one of us any questions.
Let me get this out of the way. Hi, how are you? Thank you for inviting us tonight. We are in, well, as you know, we're, we just were invited to the MSBA program. We're gonna be officially invited to the program in, at the end of April. So at that point in time, we'll be starting, the first part of the process is to go out for our OPM, our owner's project manager, after which time, after the OPM is selected, then MSBA will help us and assist us in choosing an architect for our program, so. We're in the very beginning stages of this, of this building project, it's a very exciting time for all of us. We're looking forward just to getting, getting into the program in April. And, you know, we're, I'm ready to hit the ground running, we already have the OPM RFQ ready to go, so we're just waiting for the okay to, to start, to start that process, so.
If they're in, I know it's really early, do you have any, if everything went smoothly?
Yes.
And we did a project here, we know there's, we know there's a few bumps along the road, but do you have a, a date in mind when you're hoping for both groundbreaking and then the new school opening?
Yeah, so it's quite a distance.
Right.
It's towards the end of 2024.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, given what we're in through here, that makes perfect sense, yeah. And, and your processes, you have to get approval of each town in your, each community in your district, correct?
Correct.
So that could be, is it town meeting approval or city council? Is it, is it different depending on the type of government?
Yeah, varies per town.
Okay.
So, but you're right, it's either town meeting or city council.
Okay.
For almost all.
Thanks.
Do you know what year the, I know we'll have to pay a proportion at share in North Reading.
Sure.
You know what year, fiscal year that would be that you'd be looking for the funds?
Sure, it'd be towards the end of the project, 2024, 2025.
It would be then, okay.
Yeah.
It's very exciting. I, I mean, the, the need is clearly there. The demand for vocational education is skyrocketing and it's always a shame to me that we can't meet, not only your school, we can't meet the demand statewide. And these kids really wanna learn a trade and I think, I think people don't understand is a lot of these kids are going on to college now. It's not like, when my father went to trade school, it was trade school, you didn't go to college when you went to trade school. And it's a big difference now. And so to have a new facility where the kids have access to modern technology and modern equipment, I think is, is critical, so.
And I, I know last year you talked a lot about the waiting list that you had. I mean, how, how has that changed over the last year? Has it increased more?
It hasn't.
We don't have a tremendous amount of kids on a waiting list.
Yeah.
Like, how many spots do you have and how many?
Obviously, the new school is definitely going to hell. And I believe February, we're taking some kids, right? We're taking some, but it's still, how many are there now, do you know offhand?
Not offhand, it varies. Initially, when we send out the initial acceptance, there are over 300 students who don't get accepted, who get put on a waiting list. Then students are able to reapply, so over time, through some attrition, some students don't reapply. Some might decide to go on to, you know, a prep school or something else. So we really work hard to get as many people accepted, even going towards the end of sophomore year, that are still interested in coming.
Is the state, is the state taking any, making any effort or making any moves to try to increase the number of vocational schools? Obviously, you're, you're in close contact with the state now for the building project, but do you see any?
Right, no, they're not, they're not. I think the governor's very supportive of the new school building projects.
Right.
For vocational schools, so.
Right.
I know last year they accepted a, a pretty good amount of vocational schools to be expanded.
Well, then we see when you look what happened over with, you know, the North Shore School, you know, hopefully we get the same thing for our students and for rest of your students to, to take advantage of, because I think, you know, that school is Essex Tech with, they merged with Essex Aggie, right?
Essex Aggie and North Shore Tech.
Right, and now it's, is it Essex Tech now, they call it?
It is.
Yeah, so.
So a quick question before I hand it over to Mr. Bernard. Is the state taking into consideration the amount of students that you can build the school for, knowing that you have a, a waiting list as large as you do?
Yeah, in fact, the, our vote was delayed until the next MSBA meeting because of the enrollment study being so challenging. If it's a regular comprehensive school system, they look at projection and birth rate. I think the challenge with our school is similar to what happened at Essex Tech. They built the school based on the waiting list, but then they didn't realize how many more students would start applying because it was a new updated facility. So immediately, their waiting list doubled.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, so now with the new school, they actually have a much bigger waiting list than when they had a school half the size. So we've gone back and forth with the MSBA board, trying to come up with a number that's, that's feasible for the towns and as well as for the student interest looking forward.
Mr. Bernard?
That, that was essentially my question, is what was the targeted enrollment population that you were, you were hoping the school would accommodate, but that, yeah, thank you.
What, what is the number? How, how many students can you accommodate now and?
So right now, we have about 1,250 students. And, you know, with the 300 waiting list that we get down to, we could easily go up to 1,500 without any further interest, but like I said earlier, I don't know what the interest will be once they see the facility like they did with Essex Tech.
Well, based on what we saw here in terms of the retention of our eighth grade students, once this school was built, it went down from about 12% on average, we'd lose every year from the eighth grade to what, four, five percent now? So it's the same kind of effect. The kids wanna stay here now.
Right.
Because of the, the new facility and all the new technology.
Right, and we had an experience when Woburn opened their new high school, and a lot of our students come from Woburn and there was a drop in enrollment at Northeast for the first couple of years, but after, you know, the, the students got used to the school and it wasn't as shiny anymore.
Right.
The enrollment came back and leveled out.
Yep.
So if I can move on to something that's actually related in, to the discussion we're having, it's a new program that we have at Northeast. One thing I've spoken to this board about is really our desire and goal for Northeast to be looked at as your second high school, not just as an option or as a competing high school, but a school that serves vocational needs from, you know, the very young students all the way up to adult learners. As you may recall, we have an early childcare department where we, people can bring in children for daycare services at a much reduced rate. It's, it's run by our students and our staff and our early childcare center. And on the other hand, we also have over 1,500 students in our adult ed program at night who come and they learn different vocational programs and trades at a much reduced rate. In the middle, we really took a hard look at how we can help some of the high school students who didn't initially come to Northeast for whatever reason, but are at a point, whether they're sophomores, juniors, or seniors, where they're struggling a little bit with the career path. So I sent out a letter, I think I sent one to, Madam Chairman, I sent one to John this past week, explaining our new Saturday program. So we received a $100,000 grant from Cummings Property. And what we decided to do with that money was to develop a Saturday program in which students can come from all of our 12 districts, including North Reading, and I did check today, we do have quite a few North Reading high school students signed up, and they can do an exploratory program on Saturdays at Northeast. We have three sessions and we have 10 programs that we're offering. And again, this is for any of your high school students. At the end of the program, we also have them work with the career counselor to explore career pathways if they decide that one of these programs is something they want to go forward with. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a breakfast with, we invited all of the high school principals and guidance counselors to come over, we gave them a tour, we explained the program, and we've gotten some, some great results. We've had over 100 students sign up already and we're still getting calls and emails every day about it. Really exciting, but again, it's free to the students of North Reading, so if anyone's listening on cable TV and are interested, they just have to call Northeast up and call our main number up and, and get some information about the program. But we, we had a small pilot program last year and the feedback was amazing and it's really exciting for us to try to give back to the communities in such a way.
Can you give us a few, I absolutely don't want every detail of our program, but a few of the details, like what, you say exploratory, can you kinda expand on that a little bit? What happens when?
Sure, so we, you know, we have programs such as robotics, plumbing, health assisting, so they would come in and do a, a four-hour course introducing the program, learning the basics on, you know, each industry.
Almost like a freshman exploratory.
Uh huh, right.
Certainly much smaller.
Yeah. Some students can actually stay, have actually decided to do the same program for three sessions because they might have come for cosmetology and loved it and said, hey, can I keep coming? And we've worked a program to allow for that as well.
That's great. And so it gives them a flavor if they say, hey, maybe there's something I really wanna do, I wanna, I wanna apply to go to the school.
Right, and, you know, they might go directly into the trade, you know, we share different two-year programs and different college programs.
Right.
And they work with our career counselors as well to help them.
So for older students, that's really the path that that brings them on, is a sort of introduction to the trade, and then you can help them get connected with sort of post-high school programs.
Yep, exactly, because too many, we, we would bump into too many students who were in their junior, senior year and for whatever reason, they realize, I'm not going to college, I'm not saying it was a mistake to go where I went, but I really would like a little more direction into a, a trade or a skill. And this is something we hope fulfills that.
Yep, that's a great idea.
That is an awesome idea.
I have to say, our staff reaches out to all of the high schools in our communities and they offer breakfasts and, and different events for councils to come up and it's really a shame if you're not taking part of that because it's a great way to actually see firsthand what's going on so that you can make recommendations to students. I know it's difficult sometimes to let staff out during the day because we're faced with that too, but it, it is very beneficial to try and get somebody there for those. And we appreciate the fact that you're interested in any of that as well.
Well, I think the thing that, you know, as, as Rich mentioned, you know, these, if they're, they're older students, sometimes the kids feel a little lost, right? When they're junior, senior year, they're like, geez, maybe college isn't for me. And this is a great opportunity for them to explore some things. And I think that that's the kind of thing we need, so you don't lose those kids who will lose interest in school because it's not going the direction they thought it was gonna go. So I, I think that's, that's great, I'm glad we have a few North Reading students and, you know, hopefully we get some more, look into it if, if they're, if they're interested.
Yeah, I would like to see it a little bit more. I know my son would have done so much better had he gone to a vocational school because he learns better with hands-on than, you know, sitting in front of a book and stuff. So he's actually at the Universal Technical Institute in Norwood for mechanics. He did one year of college and said, nope, it's definitely not for me. So I think this would have put him on that path a lot sooner.
I think too, another way, we, again, we wanna help out with the regular high schools. I got a, a call from some parents from one of the other towns and they were disappointed their high school wasn't offering a CAD elective this year and they had students who were really interested and they said, you know, they're not juniors and seniors, is there any way you could accept some sophomores who are really interested in learning CAD because they want to go on for an engineering degree? And we were able to bring them aboard as well. And once again, it, it was a, a savings to this town because they were being pressured otherwise to add an elective they couldn't afford. And I think they were able to appease the parents by, you know, sending them over to Northeast to give them their, their CAD program.
You're welcome to come by, you know, not just drop by. I wouldn't do that to anybody. Call Mr. DeBarry and ask anytime, they come up and see what the kids do, it's, I think you'd all be very impressed with what goes on at that school. I wish we had an opportunity to do more of that, actually.
Right.
Do you have information on the Saturday?
Yeah, I can leave some, some of the flyers.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Did you mention what the reimbursement is right now?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you wanna know that.
Yeah, they, yeah, that's a good, good point, very good point.
So the reimbursement rate as of right now is 71.4%, which is
Wow.
really unprecedented.
Yeah.
Compared to all your, all other projects that are going on, so.
I think we ended up with 49 for this.
Forty-nine, okay.
It was 47 and then we got two additional percent for the green school, correct? Or was it 49 to 51?
I think we were at, of course, like 51.
So it was 49 to start and then we got the two, two points for being a green school and that, that kinda stuff. But that's a, that's an outstanding reimbursement. And so then the rest is divided among the X number of communities divided by the number of students.
Correct.
Per community, basically, correct?
Yes.
Now, how does that work? So some of your communities, I mean, obviously the, the median income in your communities varies widely. Does that have an, it has an impact, I guess, on the reimbursement rate, right? So that's why, but it doesn't impact how much they have to spend per student or, or does it? I would assume that some of the cities with lower median incomes pay less per student for the school, is that how it works?
We get, we get paid the same for every student, it's the state would subsidize the city or town if they require more need.
All right.
But we, everyone definitely pays the same. There used to be a misconception that certain towns were paying more per student and that it wasn't, we get the same per student.
I was, I was trying to figure out if it was the state or federal government that, but it's the state that.
Yeah, it's the state.
Thank you.
For, for the Saturday programs, would you accept eighth graders? Because you, you're a high school, ninth through 12.
Right.
Would you, since it's in the spring, would you, is the interest to have eighth graders that are interested in maybe going there for high school or is it only if they're already in ninth grade?
Well, we do a summer program for the eighth graders.
Okay.
In July, so we have an exploratory for that. And I think, you know, it would be something we would have looked at, but the age discrepancy between a senior in high school to be in a classroom with an eighth grader, we thought was a little too, too much.
Do you think if this is successful, there's a chance that, I mean, I, you can't speak for the grant giver, but there's a chance that this could continue or have you had any discussion with moving forward?
Great question, yes. We have already reached out to them.
Great.
Cummings Property is, has a great partnership with Northeast. They take a lot of our co-op students. And Mr. Cummings, who provided the grant, is actually gonna hopefully come speak to our students about entrepreneurship and a new book that he wrote recently, so we definitely have a great partnership with them. And they couldn't tell us for sure, but they said we have a pretty good chance going forward to continue this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
This was awesome, thank you.
You two are welcome to stay.
Hopefully we'll have some, hopefully we'll have some good news this summer regarding the softball field project.
Yeah, okay, we'll be waiting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna post this later?
Thank you very much.
What, so you're gonna post this later?
Thank you.
I'll post it.
Countdown.
Okay, next, we have the school committee policies, the first readings of a couple of them, three or four. So I will hand it over to either Ms. Boutwell or Mr. McGowan.
Why don't I get started because? Because the first one, we, we, there might be, there are potential adjustments based on what we printed here. With this policy, we were working to sort of just clarify a little language at the end, and, actually, now my notes, Janine...
It was the paragraph following item four.
Well, yeah, the first thing was the, just that quick thing with the superintendent for...
So, in the second paragraph, the superintendent, where it says, "or his designee," we should change that to, or, or his or her designee.
I think that's how it is in most of them. It's his or her.
So, that is the first little minor change we would like to make there. Sorry, Diana, for dropping this on you.
No.
We were talking about this earlier. And then the second change is that the paragraph, just after item four, at the end of the paragraph, it says, "When schools are closed for emergency reasons, staff members will comply," and it currently says, "with the committee policy in reporting for work." And as we were discussing it earlier, we realized that there may not, that that's a little too vague.
Yeah, I was going to say it.
What committee policy is.
Right.
And so, we proposed the change would be, "Staff members will comply with the adopted policies and procedures for reporting for work." Is that right?
Yes.
Is it there, or is it in the contracts? Is that even in the contracts?
That is, we did talk about that, and that would, that would, I think, fall within the policies.
It really would be our adopted policy to follow the contracts.
Okay. I have some other suggestions, too, when you're ready. Sorry, did you have other changes or not?
That's it for this one.
So, in the second paragraph, when it talks about decisions to close or evacuate, again, this is just nitpicky, but like, before, it's talking about closing, delaying, dismissing, relocating, or evacuating? And then later on, it just narrows it down to making decisions to close or evacuate? I just wonder if we should either list all, all five of those, or define it as adjusted school time, something like that? It just seems like it's, it's broader above, and it's narrower in, in paragraph two.
Two ex-policy committee people. Problems.
And then, well, that, that was one, and then for one, two, three, and four, should they have colons and then a period at the end of it?
No.
And, no?
Should have semi.
Semi-colons, that's what I meant, semi-colons.
Sorry.
Semi-colons, and then an and, and a period at the end?
Scott, if you're worried about that, I'm going to have to talk to you after.
I mean, if we're doing it, if we're modifying it now, might as well do it.
As a former editor, Scott, I'm...
I, I would also...
It's not a full sentence, but it should be an independent clause, actually.
I would also remind that the, the meeting is, of course, the, the policy subcommittee meetings are open to all, so feel free to...
At 7:00 AM?
I'll send you them. Those are my question things there, so...
So, just for my notes, so what, what's the wish of the committee on the first?
Well, I do see the, the, the point that Scott's making, because we only say close or evacuate in the second one. We don't reference delaying, or...
Right.
Early dismissal, or...
I would just...
So, you could change it to, in, in making the decision to close or alter the school schedule, to close, alter the school day schedule, or evacuate. I think that would kind of take care of it, wouldn't it?
Or, or to say, in, in making the decision to alter the schedule as...
Stated above.
As noted below.
Right. That's good.
In making the decision to alter the school day as noted above?
Yeah. Or evacuate. Or would that, no, actually, because evacuation's different, right? That's not altering the school, well, it is altering the school day, I guess.
I think it is.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
Well, it says as above, so you would be fine.
Because when I, when I was on policy, I had you, Jerry, and Julie all giving comments, so...
Well, that's because it was you that was on policy.
I bet the actual policy meeting, committee, I bet your meetings were just wonderful.
It was just Scott. Scott was the only one, no, he wasn't. Well, Scott and Janine, right?
Yes.
And we're agreeing, no, no punctuation after the four items.
Yeah.
I was asking. You're the English teacher, Mr. Bernard.
So, Johnny, want to read back the, the changes?
So, I have no changes in paragraph one.
Correct.
In paragraph two, I have, "In making the decision to alter the school day as noted above, the superintendent or his/her designee," and then that would all continue.
Yep.
"No changes to items one, two, three, or four."
Yep.
The next paragraph would read, "Students, parents, and staff will be informed early in each school year of the procedures which will be used to notify them in case of emergency closing and/or evacuation."
Should you change it there again?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say that, to alter the school day as noted above.
Same language.
Well, the, the, the information that gets disseminated to families at the start of the school year is around a late start or a cancellation. I do not issue procedures for an evacuation.
Yeah, because those events are happening at a, at a pace that, I mean, any notification is going to be well after the fact.
Correct. And then it reads, "When schools are closed for emergency reasons, staff members will comply with the adopted policies and procedures for reporting for work." And then the last paragraph in red, as is.
Okay.
Here's what I have.
Okay.
Okay. So, the, unless the committee feels otherwise, do the, does, do those changes constitute a reason to not go forward with the first?
Oh, no.
No.
No, I can go forward.
I agree. Okay.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to accept, or sorry, for a first reading, the amended, revised policy AFC.
Yep, I will move that we do a first reading of the amendment to policy AFC as amended here and, and revised on the fly.
Second.
Please make sure you get that correct.
That's the official, that's the, isn't that the official?
Lowercase f's.
Yeah.
With the hyphens, on the fly.
That was for you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mrs. Boutwell, do you want to do the next one?
Oh, sure. The next one is CGA, and this was mainly to update to sort of the current state in which things happen, correct, Mr. Bernard?
That is correct.
So, it really just removed the one statement and replaced it with what you're seeing here.
Makes sense.
So, I have questions on this as well and comments. So, all of the other ones after this talk about contracts, and it, and it talks about where to find them and who negotiates them, and the title talks about the contracts, and this one doesn't. It just says administrative compensation, working conditions, et cetera. I'm just wondering why it wasn't something about like administrative contracts, like the other ones that are after this, and talk about who negotiates it, or, or are you able to see these? Are you able to see these contracts if they go to the superintendent's office?
Yeah. They're public, right?
Because the, the next two policies talk about where, you know, that, how to find them, it's up to the superintendent, and it will negotiate them. Just wondering why this is different than...
I thought the title should probably, on this, should be the same as the other ones. I thought you should just say administrative contracts, just like you have supervisor of buildings and grounds employment contract. You could say administrative employment contracts, and the rest of it, I don't think you need. I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because that, that makes it...
Compensation and working conditions are within the contract.
Right.
I think you say that, and then just also maybe say that, the, who negotiates these? Is it different for different people? You do.
No, for the administrators, it's me.
Yeah, because the other ones all say the superintendent shall negotiate.
Well, technically, that's not accurate.
Right, that's not...
The director of student services and the director of finance and operations have a contract with the school committee.
Right.
Okay. Then that's fine, then.
Right.
But, yeah, the title, I think, should be consistent with the other ones, at least.
Just administrative employment contracts, right? If that makes sense.
Administrator.
Administrator.
Administrator contracts.
Yeah.
So, lose the compensation, working condition, et cetera?
Just say administrator contracts, yeah.
Okay.
Administrator or contractor contracts.
So, I move that we have a first reading of policy CGA, now titled Administrator Contracts.
Second.
Any other tweaks?
No.
What did you say, revisioned on the fly?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
As amended.
Aye.
Yes. Yeah, on the fly. They're all on the fly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Next one is CGAC, and this is for, again, similar across the, the next two, supervisor of buildings and grounds employment contracts. So, we changed the language there, and then revised the language to be to the current state in which this takes place.
So, one thing to Scott's point, should we note in here that this contract is also available at the superintendent's office, as we just did on the last one?
You can.
I mean, I, just to be, again, for consistency.
So, yeah.
Just to say, what do we say? The contract is available through the superintendent's office?
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the first reading as amended?
I move that we accept the first reading of policy CGAC as amended.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next is CGAD for the food services contract. Again, it's, does not have the language around this being in the superintendent's office.
I'm confused on this one, because Michael does, negotiates the food service contract, we don't.
Well...
This is not the workers. This is right, this is, this says the food services contract.
That's right, I was just noticing that myself, that it's the, it's the con...
Yeah, it's a contract with Chartwells, yeah. So, you negotiate that, we don't.
Yeah, well, we're, we're obligated to procure those services on a cycle.
Right, but I'm saying, it shouldn't...
The school committee ultimately approve.
Yeah, that is a contract we ultimately bring...
To the committee.
To the committee and say, we recommend moving forward with this provider for this length of term, based on the RFP.
Yeah, I, I guess, we have, I've never seen us have a role, though, in the exact, actual negotiations. You come back to us, or the previous business administrator.
How about, how about the, the school committee through the superintendent or his or her designee?
Yes. That's good.
We do have, that is one, we do have you vote the contract, though.
Right.
I know that, yeah.
But the fact that you, you know, either you or John is directly involved, we should get that in there, that's all.
Yep.
And that's good.
And also where it's stored, again.
And that it's available.
Diana just said, yeah, where it's available.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the first reading as amended CGAD.
I will move that we accept the first reading of, as amended, of policy CGAD, food, school food services contract.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We kind of tweaked this.
Okay.
So, on CGCA, recruitment of principals, the suggestion was to move the, what is left of the last paragraph, move it up to the first paragraph, so that it would read, "When an opening in a principalship occurs," and then we would use the language from below, "the school committee delegates to the superintendent the responsibility for selecting a suitable candidate who possesses the skills and ability to carry out the duties of the principalship." And then we would start a new sentence with, "The superintendent will facilitate a hiring process." So, no change in the wording, just shifting that up into the first sentence.
Good to me.
It was hanging, it was hanging down at the end.
That would be a new, new sentence, "The superintendent will facilitate a hiring process."
Right. That would be the second sentence of the correct paragraph.
Should school district be capitalized?
Where? Oh.
I don't think so.
No.
District was capitalized in the last one, that's when I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I like learning my English from you, though.
No.
Can you imagine?
It was left hanging.
Yeah, reads better now.
Okay.
Maybe in the last one? There's one.
In the, in the district, yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recruitment of principals, first reading as amended.
I move that we accept the first reading as amended of policy CGCA, recruitment of principals.
Second.
Any other concerns or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Does it change? No?
No, I...
It's the last one we know about. Scott may have other thoughts, but that's...
I mean...
What do you got over there?
I read them.
Get that all marked up? Okay. Policy CGI, I believe in, to summarize the changes here, it was somewhat outdated, and also to simplify the text here. So, you can see, we, we cut out the bottom, which was maybe too much detail that really needed to be there, and anything that was outdated, updated with the current state.
All set. Yep, well said, yep. So, this is, I think, to bring it more in line with the practice under the new educator evaluation system for which the administrators and the principals also are evaluated.
I mean, my only question was, is it professional development for the administrative staff or of the administrative staff? Sorry.
It's for, right?
I don't know.
Where is it?
The very last line. Is it for the administrative staff or of the administrative staff?
We did make a change to that, that was existing language.
I think it's for. The training is for the administrative staff, right?
Yeah.
Or the, the development of the administrative staff?
I think it's for.
Does stuff keep you open?
Need I comment it on it?
I don't think it's for.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the first read, revised first reading of CGI.
No, we didn't revise it, did we?
As amended.
No, since the last time.
As amended here, yes.
Yeah, there's no amendment on this one.
There's no, that's right. Revised, yes. I move that we accept the first reading of the revised policy CGI educator evaluation for administrators and principals.
Second.
All right. All right, any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And next is DJEA, Purchasing Authority. Again, you can tell we're cutting out sort of this reference. Whether or not some needed, I couldn't state, but definitely to simplify the procedure. Mr. Bernard, do you happen to know if that is outdated as well?
I think it is, and I think that, and also the fact that we talked about that should those references change, and it means each time the policy would need to be changed. But indeed, the, I think the more salient of the points is the fact that that language about the $4,000 is outdated.
I think we've taken that common approach across the documents, that if there is any type of reference to something external, we typically want to remove it from a maintenance perspective.
Right, the last one, I think, to that point, was about the removing a school committee member. If the town's policies on that were to change, then each time the committee would need to update its policy.
Yes.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the revised first reading of the policy DJEA.
I'll move to accept the revised first reading of policy DJEA, Purchasing Authority.
Second.
Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And last but not least, JGFH, the Wireless Communication Devices. You can see here that we did not change the legacy text, we added text regarding the guidelines within the handbook for students and parents. That really is about the fact that high school students do leverage their devices for various school-based activities, and there's, you know, other various reasons in which they should have their device. And so we wanted to comment on that as well as reference the handbook.
So, I don't like this at all. I don't, I mean, I don't get it. You can't say they can't use them, and then down there say, well, well-
You can.
You can use them. I mean, we say you can't use them.
Yeah.
But then we say in here, well, we're going to adhere to the spirit, but they have to use them. So we shouldn't say you can't use the devices, and then say, well, sometimes you can. We should just, I think we should adjust the language in the second paragraph.
So perhaps we could just add a, with the exception noted below.
Except, the, I think the, what do you call them? The Chromebooks that we're handing out are considered wireless communication devices. And so we have them now starting in, what, 7th grade?
Yes.
So I just, I just don't know-
That's a good point.
If, if this, I think this might have to be rewritten significantly, considerably, to take into account everything that we're doing now.
I think the spirit of the policy subcommittee's work here was about cellphone use. And I think that definition up above, I think, you know, captures that to a large degree. I understand what you're saying about the Chromebooks, but I think those have a, you know.
Except the second sentence of the first paragraph, you could describe a Chromebook as-
You could.
Those devices.
You could, if you wanted to.
Even an Apple Watch, right?
We can just change the language to-
Yeah, it's a simple thing, I think.
Cellphone, or whatever.
Well, what about Apple Watches? Can't they get their texts and stuff?
You can.
So would they have to take that off?
No.
You just say, other than school-issued device, other than an approved school-issued device.
That might be a way to do it.
Yeah.
I think, but again, that's, there's two or three different issues. One issue is what's included in this.
Right.
And then the other issue, I mean, I completely agree with you, Mel, which doesn't happen often, but, I mean, it just seems like we say you can't do it, and then, but you can do it under these circumstances.
That's why, I think, so I think two changes. One is, is to establish that other than a school-issued approved device. The other change is to say, with the exception of noted below.
Right, wireless devices.
I'm not, I'm not sure that a Chromebook fits in the second sentence of the first paragraph.
I think that's right, but I also think that general language is, it could, could come into play at some point. I mean, it's certainly true now, that if you're issued any, a school device, there's no question that it would be in violation of the policy, because it's not. And we don't know what devices will be issuing five years from now.
In the future.
Yeah, I just think that-
Chromebooks might become-
Yeah, I think that's good language.
Phones.
If it's a school, if it's a school-issued device, it's approved for use. And I think that, put that line, to codify that, I think makes sense.
And hopefully, it's not language we have to revisit, because it's changed, it's general enough that we don't have to revisit it because of technology changes every five years.
So the question is just, where do you put that? You could put it, I don't know.
So, you might, you might put it, you might start the second paragraph referencing the exceptions below, and then you might have, this might be the first exception, the third paragraph might be the first exception, and approved school-issued devices might be the second exception.
Right, I see what you're saying. So you say, you start the second sentence with referring to the-
Yeah, with the exception of, or with-
I don't know what the right language is.
Right, but, except for the exceptions, which is not the right language, but-
You can say, it turned off with the following exceptions.
Except for school-issued devices. No, except for the, except for the below exceptions. Is that except for the below?
What about for the purpose of this policy, a wireless communication device is any privately-owned?
Or not school?
Or non-school-issued communication device?
Yep, I'd sneak it in there.
Is any non-school-issued?
Right, but that doesn't address the third paragraph exception.
Right, where they still, the high school kids are using phones.
The third paragraph, though, that, that paragraph is verbatim out of the student handbook.
I don't think the objection is with the paragraph itself, is that we're very explicitly saying you can't use them, and then we're saying you can use them sometimes.
Right.
They have to be often in your locker, but then you can use them for certain purposes.
But only at the high school.
It's not overly complicated, though, it's just using the language exception, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a, it's a high school-only exception, it's not additional.
So you could say, with, you could just say, with the exceptions noted below-
Yeah.
Wireless communication devices.
That's good.
Oh, in the start of the second paragraph?
Yeah, yeah.
Paragraph, with the exception?
Exceptions, because we're going to add one.
Noted below.
Right. And then just leave it the same.
And then the first, the first exception is the one, is paragraph three, and the second exception is any school-issued and approved device.
I think we had any viewers, they're all gone now.
So I'm sorry, I need some help with the notes. I have, the only change I have right now is the first sentence of paragraph two.
Right.
With the exceptions noted below, comma, wireless communication devices, blah, 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 blah.
Correct. Everything's, everything's stay the same there, I think.
And then where else am I?
So then, paragraph three becomes the first exception.
That, there's no change there.
And, without change, and then we add another exception that refers to any school-issued and approved device.
Okay, so we need to put that into a sentence.
I thought we were going to sneak that in behind wireless communication device.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, they can do that, too.
So how are you going to do that, John? What are you going to do?
Well, you could, so then, so that would mean that the sentence I just read would be, with the exception noted below.
Right.
The exception as noted below.
Right.
With the exception as noted below, and then-
Then the rest stays the same.
And then in the first paragraph-
Second sentence.
You're defining the devices.
Communication device is any non-school-issued communication device.
That's fine, too.
Yeah, you're just defining the device.
Yep, that's fine, too.
Okay. So there's basically two changes. Paragraph one, second sentence, for the purpose of this policy, a wireless communication device is any non-school-issued communication device, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Paragraph two now begins with, with the exception as noted below, comma, wireless communication devices, so on.
Yes.
No other changes.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Very good, I think I have it.
So with that, we'll make, I'll entertain a motion to accept the amended revised first reading of policy JGFH.
I move that we accept the amended and revised first reading of policy JGFH, Wireless Communication Devices.
Second.
Any other further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good job, guys.
That was pretty cool.
Guys and ladies.
It's a process.
That's a lot, though, got a lot done tonight.
All right, next on the agenda is the mid-year update, the school improvement plans across the district, which I will let Mr. Bernard, the superintendent, speak to.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I think just, the school committee had established as a goal for itself back, I'm going to say, maybe three years ago, to receive a, an update from the principals regarding their efforts to meet the goals outlined in their school improvement plans that they typically present to you in the prior June. So what I do is create a live document in, in Google Drive, that the principals can go in at any time from the beginning of the school year until usually around Christmas vacation, maybe early January, to, to identify the status of their progress. And then I compile this report with their help and issue it to the committee. It's really, it's in from, Mr. Webster, I think it might have actually come from your suggestion a few years ago, and I think this, this process has worked well to kind of just give you a sense of the progress they're making, much like I think you're going to do in the next action on your, on your agenda with, with your own goals, but to also, you know, just, you know, keep you informed as to, I think, the value that the school improvement plans have at each of our schools, too. I don't think that they're, we've never considered them to be documents that just sat on the shelf and collected dust after they were provided to the school committee. And so that's what this, this document does, is give you kind of a mid-year update from what you saw in June.
Question, question that's somewhat related to this, but not specifically to these reports. When, it's another report in terms of the new state report card, are we supposed to be getting those soon?
So the state report cards were put up on the website very recently, within the last couple of days.
Oh, they were, okay.
For the accountability report cards, yes. And the principal, I have an administrative council meeting on Thursday with the, with all of the principals, and what we're going to do at that point is decide, we usually craft like kind of a standard letter that's consistent across the five schools to communicate out to their, their school committees that the report cards are available on the website.
It's new, right? They've changed, haven't they changed the report significantly? Yeah.
Yeah, much more interactive.
So where do we find that? We go to the DESE website?
Correct.
And go to-
Well, you can go, you can go on our, our website now.
Okay.
It's on the-
Oh, it's on our website?
It is, I can tell you the tab. Excuse me one second. If you go to the QuickLinks, if you go to QuickLinks, you'll see a district and school report cards.
Okay.
It's about the fourth one down in the left-hand column.
All right.
So homepage of the website, QuickLinks, District and School Report Cards.
Okay.
I hadn't planned to talk about it tonight, I'm, I'm fine talking about it.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure they were out yet.
I'm going to say it was either Thursday or Friday of last week, I think it was Friday.
Thanks.
I'm so not technology savvy.
So if you go to the homepage of the website-
Yeah.
And you go to QuickLinks.
So this is the homepage, right?
That's the app.
That, yeah, that's, it's a little, yeah.
Yeah.
And you go to QuickLinks, and then you'll see a tab for District and School Report Cards.
John, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Mel, help Janina out, will you?
Where's this QuickLink?
I found the climate surveys in the middle school interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I was just curious, the one that stood out to me like a sore thumb was 77 percent. This was from the staff, agree that our school is safe and secure. Do you think that's just a reflection?
Where is it here?
It's on page 10.
Yes, I see it now.
You know, those scores are mainly in the, there's a couple of low ones, but do you feel like that's just because of today's climate, or do you think it's something specific?
No, I, well, I think, I think it's a combination of things. I think it's maybe both of those things, and also the fact that this has not been administered post my presentation to the school staff that I had in January. I think I told you all about that when we had a meeting earlier, that when I outlined for them some of the efforts that we've undertaken. I don't think it's, it's, I feel very confident in talking to you about the fact that it's not related to any one incident, but I think it's just a general, for lack of a better word, it's a climate, you know, I think the reality of where we are today societally, and I think, you know, the anxiety that sometimes we carry into our schools around school safety and security is very real for a lot of people. And that's, that's my explanation to you, you know. I do think that the, the work that's been done since roughly August to now, and is, and is somewhat finishing up with your, related to school safety and security around the $175,000 state grant that we got, I think, I could, I would characterize my meetings with, with the five staffs as very positive, and I think very reassuring to them that we're, we're trying to do everything we can around school safety. But I'm always very cautious to say that, you know, this, we constantly have to be thinking about it and doing more. So I'm hoping that answers your question.
No, it does, thank you.
And on the school safety, I've had several of the batch people, families come up and say thank you for getting the locks and stuff.
Oh, good, yeah, good, that's good to hear.
That was very appreciated. Did anyone else have any?
Oh, sorry. Regarding, there was a statement in the HUD, this is all in the same theme, progress update about the Alice program, and the language used is, we have enjoyed the support from, you know, the various police department, et cetera. While our school works to further you, further the use of the Alice program, is there certain aspects of the Alice program that we're not yet utilizing that we're furthering the use of it?
No, I would say to you, what I, how I interpret that is, we continually do drills, and so I think just the idea that as we learn new things about how we train students and staff, about the use of the Alice protocols, that we're furthering its use.
Okay.
Where, the, the Alice protocols we've adopted are the comprehensive protocols. So if there were, and I'm not saying this is the number, but let's say there were 10 components to that program, all 10 are adopted here. You don't, you don't adopt Alice in part, it's either, you're either all in or you're not, and we're all in.
Okay.
The one thing that I think we have, have been working to try to, to adjust appropriately is the age appropriateness of the use of Alice, and that's more challenging at the elementary schools than it is at the middle and the high school, just given the nature of what it is, and what we're asking students to do when we participate in a drill.
Yeah.
Because, as you can imagine, it can be very unnerving.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Rich and Mel, did you have any questions or concerns?
I don't know.
I like this, I like that a lot.
Good, good. And I appreciate you taking the time to look through it, because the principals do, you know, try to be as complete as they, and thorough as they can, so, you know, it's a pretty, what is it, 13 or 14 pages, 15 pages, you know?
And I'm glad you found a process that works and doesn't take a ton of extra time from-
Don't think it's all that cumbersome to them, you know, but it's, and because they can do it over a sustained period of time.
Right, exactly.
Something happens, and they know that it's going to be reflected favorably in the work that they're doing with their, with their plan, they can go in and do it in October, November, December, so, so thank you for the opportunity to highlight a little bit for you.
I love, I mean, I like the climate survey as well.
Yeah.
It was just interesting, and something like, one of them was talking about, like, are there clear rules, and the teachers was one of the lower ones, and it was one of the highest ones for the students.
Shocking, huh?
Okay, next, the mid-year update of the school committee goals that we just had a meeting on. Rich and I are on the, on the evaluation committee, which would house this, so, do you want to talk?
Sure, so, we, first of all, we did meet just a little bit ago, and we talked about an agenda for the process for the rest of the year, both for the school committee self-evaluation and for the superintendent's evaluation, but, so I don't know if you want to discuss that now, or, or just lay, just, do we want to lay out that proposed timeline?
Yeah, we can do the timeline, and I want to bring special attention to Mel.
Right.
Who has not departed yet.
Delegately departed.
I was going to say that, but I refrained. But if you want to take a quick look at it, do you wish to participate in both, even though the date of completion is in April?
No, I think, I mean, I think you guys should do whatever you need to do, and my timeline will, I mean, I don't know when I'm going to sell my house, I don't, so I think you guys, whatever schedule makes sense for the committee makes sense to me. I shouldn't tailor it around me.
We have a tentative schedule for the school committee self-evaluation of March 4th to distribute and review relevant documents to the school committee. And then on April 8th, we'll collect those responses, which is why you've been here for the full year, so your input, I think, would be-
I can probably get, still get my responses in, but-
Right, right.
If you're talking about-
Somehow, if I'm delegately departed by then, then I just won't participate in the meeting. And you can, you can interpret my responses however you want.
No, we think you did a good job.
After we see them, we can decide whether to-
Yeah, whether you want to use them or not, right, exactly.
Decide after.
No, John can decide.
So on April 8th, we will collect all of them, and either Rich or I will put them into one document, and that will be done on April 11th. And then we'll present the results, oh, sorry, yeah, we'll present the results on April 29th. And then for the superintendent, that won't be sent out until April 8th, so that-
So that won't begin until April 8th, that's right, and, which is the end of your evaluation period, correct?
Correct, May, May 2017 to April 2019.
Yeah. So, so we'll, we'll get those documents on April 8th and have them completed, the committee will have the, get the forms back on April 29th, and then have the discussion on May 13th.
So, that's just the timeline now, and the highlighted goals are the ones that you've read done?
So I, as I, in the past, I've, I took some liberties here, but in my, in an effort to help you assess your own progress toward meeting your goals for the year, kind of as a kind of a midnight up, mid, mid-year update. assess your own progress toward meeting your goals for the year, kind of as a kind of a midnight up, uh, mid, mid, mid-year update. These, I highlighted the goals that I felt the committee had addressed to this point. But it's, it's only my, you know, it's only my opinion. It's certainly was, again, it was, the spirit of this was just to help you. It's not...
Well, we've addressed them, but we haven't succeeded on...
You may not have succeeded, but it's something that you've addressed.
Right, like the human resources, the facilities manager, the maintenance mechanic.
You're advocating for that and the funding of the budget.
Yeah, it's going to be an incomplete...
But if you, to that point...
We advocated for it, but...
And when you go, that's why on the, on the, um, next page.
The budget.
About the budget being approved, I did not highlight that.
Right.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
And the way we grade ourselves is, um, not yet started, started, proficient.
Exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and...
Not yet started.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. So like with the...
Not yet addressed, yeah.
With the, even the budget one, we could do, you know, level one, which is, which we just started, you know? So, but that stuff will be handed out.
I mean, I think if we're on schedule with the budget, we could.
Right.
Treat that as a, you know, level two or something.
I don't think there's anything in here that we've, um, I mean, there are a couple. The freshman advise, expanding the freshman advisory program, we haven't really spent much time.
I actually have a pretty comprehensive data report for you at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I got it too late last week to include this week, but...
Okay.
Mr. LaPrette did do a student survey.
And we, we talked about, I, I, the one professional development that I, I know I did was going to the summer institute for the MAS C. So there is, there is at least some activity there. I don't know if anybody else did anything.
As long as one of us develops, it's probably good.
Yeah. Diane and I both did the, the training too, so that's worth something, right?
I, I, I've got fifteen years of regression. Very successful one.
Kind of offset a little bit.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah.
Well, I will say, is everybody on the MAS C listserv? That's the one key thing.
Sometimes I think I am.
Reference that in the meeting.
I'm not sure what I'm on with that.
Yeah, making sure that you're getting all those emails.
I'm definitely not on the listserv. I don't get enough emails to qualify as a listserv.
No, the listserv is good, though. It's, um, like today, there was one where they were talking about they don't let, we should we let people comment at our school community meeting? And I responded, what's the purpose of having an open meeting if you don't?
Yeah.
Give people a chance to comment. I don't, I don't, there are committees that don't allow any kind of public comment. Even at the beginning, like we, and we, we go beyond. We let, if there are parents here or individuals that are interested in topics, we let them ask questions. I think that makes sense.
I mean, we would love people to comment, actually.
Exactly. But it's a good, the listserv is good because you, you often see topics that hit on something that you're doing in your district.
The buses, bus day.
There was a bus, there was a thing today about, um, I think it's a regional district bus contract where they're locked in for five years and...
You didn't spoke to me about that.
They're trying to get out of it and...
Well, they went out to bid and they only got one bid and it was that contract, but it went up. But it's still lower than other towns.
But someone thinks they can get lower and it's a...
And that's what they were talking about. Can we just do this in private?
Right, yeah.
Like talk about it in the meetings.
Yeah, no, you have to...
You go into executive, no, you can't go into...
You know.
Yeah.
So...
Does following Tracy Novick on Twitter count as professional development?
That is good, yes. That's actually very good.
She's got a great Twitter.
Yeah, she's got a great account.
I'm telling you, the listserv actually does, anyways.
Yeah, no, I probably, I should, I do.
But Tracy's good. It's following Tracy when she covers the meetings.
She has great, well, and then she just has random threads on...
Yeah, she went on chapter seventy the other day and the budget.
Right, and then there was one on a book she was reading, which was really fascinating.
She's good.
The history of...
Once Mel's not on there, I'll comment.
Mass Public Schools.
Because Mel, if I comment on it, I guarantee you five minutes later, Mel will disagree with me on there. The senior member from North Reading, I disagree with the junior member from North Reading.
The junior member from North Reading.
This was for informational purposes.
Right, we don't have any action, right?
Yeah, and there's nothing, there's nothing glaring that we're, we're ignoring.
I don't think so.
No. The only one that I pointed out, you said you'll have a report next meeting, so.
Yeah, it was, it was too late last week.
Right.
So.
That's good.
Again, this is mid-year, so you still got time, so I didn't feel like it was an urgent.
Um, next is an amendment to the Articles of Agreement from the SEEM Collaborative. So Superintendent Bernard?
Madam Chairman, I, I think this is a relatively simple, um, task ahead of you. I will need a, a signature document from you if you, it's the last page and I can, you can use my packet if you all, if you vote this tonight. But essentially in my, um, among my obligations as the district's representative to the SEEM Collaborative, I need to bring forward to the committee, um, any changes to the Articles of Agreement of the collaborative. And essentially, um, the change here is that the, um, the board, and it's really highlighted on page three of the document that you have. The board voted to, um, um, allow for the North Andover Public Schools to, um, join the SEEM Collaborative. They, they were now voted in as a member district. And that's essentially the change. So if, if the committee tonight has no problem with that, which it would be my recommendation that you do vote to accept that, that, then I would need Madam Chairman for you to sign a copy of this that I can send back.
I guess the only question I have, well, two questions. One, is it too early to know if North Andover will be hosting any programs in their district? And two, could this possibly impact us in not, in kids not getting into programs in SEEM because we now have another community that's trying to get kids into the SEEM?
The answer to that question is no, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first question.
Will North Andover be hosting any programs in their district? Like we, we host, don't we host them SEEM?
We, we, yes, I'm sorry. So like the Deaf and Hard-Hitting Program.
Right, yeah.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
If they have space available to host a program in their district, I don't know.
Okay.
Couldn't you do some of these without being a member district anyways before?
Yeah.
Yeah, North Andover is.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. So I don't think it would be that much of a difference if they're, they're just becoming a member.
I think your question is, is there a potential revenue for North Andover hosting? Which in turn benefits the overall company.
No, no, I know that. On the second point that he asked about like, would, would North Reading students not get in because North Andover's now there?
Yeah, because there's more kids trying to get into certain programs. That's my concern.
Correct, but I believe North Andover is already doing that. They just weren't a member of the community.
No, they can't, right? If they're not a member, though, they can, but they pay more.
I think what Mr. Webster's asking is, if North Andover now is sending a population of students to the SEEM Collaborative, is there any risk to any of the other member districts?
Right.
No, there's no...
Okay. The answer is no.
Yeah. I was just thinking there was...
That would be an impact on all the other communities.
Yeah, they're probably coming with non-members already. They're just paying a little bit higher amount.
Higher tuition rate.
It's significantly higher, isn't it?
It's, you're, you're going to see in the next document.
Right.
How much the savings is by being a member.
They've been, um, a part of the regional transportation cohort.
Oh, they have.
Already.
Okay.
So part of me was thinking maybe there's a potential savings because maybe North Andover students get to ride the same buses and...
Yeah, that makes sense.
That would be shared, but I asked Greg that and he said they're already part of it and it's already been shared.
Greg is the finance director of SEEM, uh, SEEM Collaborative.
Thanks.
See, I see no negatives to this, to this action.
With that then, um, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to move that North Reading School Committee vote to approve SEEM Collaborative's amended collaborative agreement.
I hereby move that the North Reading School Committee vote to approve SEEM Collaborative's amended collaborative agreement.
Second.
Perfect. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, North Andover.
Thank you.
Franchise fee, expansion fee.
Right.
Uh, all right, and back to you, Mr., uh, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you. So Madam Chairman, there's no action on the part of the committee tonight. The, the Board of Directors, um, of which, again, I am North Reading's representative, has already voted the fiscal year 2020 budget for, um, the SEEM Collaborative. But I am required to provide you with a full copy of it, which I've done. Similarly, um, in, in, in your packet, I provided to you, um, some, some summary documents that, um, the SEEM Collaborative has produced that I think speak to the pluses of North Reading's membership, particularly the last page of the packet. You will see, um, this is the second packet now. That by North Reading being a member of the SEEM Collaborative, a district member, um, essentially educating students at the SEEM Collaborative, um, through our, through our membership nets us a savings of approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So you can see that the benefits are significant when districts are a member, which is why a community like a North, North Andover is very eager to, to join. So again, there's no action needed by the committee. It's just informational purposes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what do they use as their benchmark for those comparable programs? It's not member versus non-member. It's something external to the SEEM Collaborative, correct?
So there's, it's a, it's a private, yeah, it's a private education, but go ahead.
Yeah, they're looking at sort of the average, sort of if you were to not have access to the, the collaborative and they would be enrolled in sort of the, a private program. I think they're looking at sort of what the, the average kind of approved.
Other external programs.
State external programs.
Okay.
Some other tuition based.
It's kind of a cost, a cost avoidance.
It's not member versus non-member.
Correct.
Because if, because if the SEEM didn't exist, all the pla, all the students we'd be placing there would have to go into a private program.
Which would be much more costly.
Yeah.
And the membership cost, you've said it before, like twenty thousand?
Five thousand dollars, yeah, for the SEEM Collaborative.
Yeah.
So well worth it.
I would say so.
So North Andover only had three students. I'm assuming they'll probably have more moving forward. They're a much, much bigger district than we are.
I think you can expect that, that they'll have more than the three.
Which will probably be a positive because it, revenue.
Keeps the tuition.
Right.
At a kind of a more stable.
Right, exactly.
Need to know more about it, learn more about it.
Are you sure you want to do the next thing on the mail?
Athletic facilities?
Yeah, that's dissolving.
Yes.
Dissolution. How do you say that?
Dissolution. So we had a, uh, we were going to dissolve the athletic facilities, um, subcommittee because our charge had been one hundred percent completed. But we were then notified we actually had to have a meeting to do that. And at that meeting, um, we discussed our accomplishments and we, um, then just took a vote on approving the minutes from the last meeting. And then we approved the minutes from that meeting. And then, um, we took a vote to recommend to the school committee that we dissolve the committee. Extremely, I think it was extremely successful, um, committed members from the community and from, you know, town, uh, town officials and Proxton Rec and, uh, school administrators and athletic directors and facilities people. It was, it was great. You know, we were able to raise, I think, close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sod and the irrigation project. And then we were able to get the bathroom and concessions stand facility completed the way we wanted it to be completed. And, uh, you know, there was a lot of concern that cost, the cost was, um, too high and we couldn't afford it. But, you know, the general, uh, the general consensus from everybody involved is it's an excellent facility. Marty Tilton said the concession stand, the restrooms have worked out perfectly. They're the right size, that the groups that have used the stand, the concession stand have been pleased with it. So, uh, at this point, there's no need for the committee to continue.
You're going to miss it.
Oh, no, I'm not.
It's a good group of people.
It was a good committee. We have a lot of good people.
You guys worked so fast and got so much done in a short amount of time.
Basically, three and a half years or...
I can tell you, there were, there were times as some of you were involved in this when we'd bring it to the school committee with that restroom and concession stand where I just wanted to bang my head against the wall because...
I think you did it.
You have to pay that, you have to pay what it costs to build a facility like that. And I know it was expensive. It was, what, almost eight, it was eight hundred thousand dollars basically, right?
Six hundred and eighty thousand? I think it was six eighty?
I think it was six eighty.
But it was, you know, it was, it was a lot of money, but it's a facility that should last.
Came out nice.
As long as that field lasts, it should be there, so.
I guess my only question is, I know that the next big expense is going to be the field needing to be changed.
What do you mean?
Isn't the turf going to have to be changed in a few years from now?
No, but that, that's town project.
Yeah, falls under the town.
The town owns the...
Quite, quite a few years away.
I think we're about four or five years away on that and that's something they have to start. You know, Marty, Marty Tilton actually brought that up at a athletic facility, athletic subcommittee meeting a couple of meetings ago. And he's already starting to think about that and, you know, whether we can raise money to help do that or whether it's going to have to be a bonding through the town, but that's four to five years down the road. The facility, it was supposed to, I think they had given us like a ten, eight to ten-year lifespan. And we're looking at, Marty was saying, we're looking at thirteen to fifteen years. We can get out of this. Because it's, it's, it's been...
It's been well maintained.
It's been maintained really well. We have it cleaned twice a year.
Yeah.
They bring a special machine and then they, and they, um, it kind of, it digs down in and digs up all the crap that's gotten in there, but it also moves all the little rubber pieces around and, and keeps it, so it doesn't get too hard. Yeah, so, um, we're in good shape. So if there are any questions, I'll read, um, this. "On November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, the North Reading School Committee voted to establish an Athletic Facilities Committee with the charge of raising funds to construct a turf field at the current Cary Park, public lavatories at the current football turf field, irrigation for the grass practice fields being constructed and the softball field and a new concession stand and storage. This would be an eleven-member committee with a length of term, terms one, two, and three years staggered." I, I will stop right there a second, saying we did look at the turf field at Cary Park, but the costs were, I think, in excess of two million dollars.
Excessive, yeah.
And we determined that that was not a feasible project to move forward with at the time. "The Athletic Facilities Committee has fulfilled its associated charge. I attest that there were no outstanding actions needed by the Athletic Facilities, nor are there any outstanding liabilities or legal actions pending. The Athletic Facilities Committee held its final meeting on April second, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of this meeting are attached. Members' terms of service expired on January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. As chairman, I am proud of the work of the members of the committee and grateful for their volunteer service. As the charge of the Athletic Facilities Committee has been fulfilled, it is my recommendation, as the chairman of the committee, that the North Reading Athletic Facilities Committee be dissolved as of February eleventh, two thousand nineteen." Thank you very much. So I guess we just need a motion to dissolve that, um, committee. And I will make that motion that, actually, I probably shouldn't as chairman of the committee. Probably let another member make it.
I will move to accept the dissolution of the Athletic Facilities Committee.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Just one, there's a second, if you don't, I, I'm, I'm thinking now that the final meeting really was held on January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Oh, right.
Was on the thirty-first?
Because we had to, we had to accept the minutes of that meeting at the, at that, at that same meeting, if you remember.
Right.
So I think that, that next to the last paragraph should be held at its final meeting. It doesn't change, I think it just, if, if the, it doesn't change the motion at all.
All right. We held our final meeting on, that's right, it was...
On January thirty.
January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
It doesn't change the spirit, the motion at all.
Right.
But just for clarification, that was, that was an official meeting and it was that meeting that the committee took the vote to recommend dissolution to this committee.
All right, so Scott made a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, perfect.
The only other discussion I would have is just to thank Mel for the work on that because I know it was not always easy and he was...
Mr. Veneti also played a, a very big role. Um, I, I think that, that the turf field, I mean, the facility, getting that built was difficult because of the expense. facility getting that built was difficult because of the expense, but raising the funds for the sod and the irrigation was not easy either, and we had a great commitment from a lot of groups and athletic groups in the community and also residents of the community stepped up in businesses. So, much appreciated.
Yeah, but you worked very, very hard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You were probably battered for many things over the years on this committee, but that might have been one of the main ones, the facilities.
Yes.
All right. Any other?
We...
Yeah, we haven't voted. Comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again, Mel.
Thank you.
Next, the proclamation, North Reading Night Off, two thousand nineteen. Oh, we're gonna get a snowstorm.
Bite your tongue.
Superintendent Bernard?
Madam Chairman, thank you. So, as you have done in the past as a committee, you have graciously proclaimed the identified date as a North Reading Night Off event. I think the chairman's comment a moment ago is, "The last three of four years, we have had a snow day from school on North Reading Night Off." So, it's been a true North Reading day and night off, but in any case, the Community Impact Team's K-12 Action Team, of which I serve as a chairman, has proclaimed, or is asking you to proclaim Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen as North Reading Night Off, and therefore is hoping that through this proclamation, you will urge that there will be no committee meetings and that people will, and we will promote quality time for families without some of the pressures and some of the other things that get in the way of quality time together as families. So, if you see fit to do so, I think a vote to proclaim Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen as North Reading Night Off would be appreciated.
I'll make a motion to proclaim Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen as North Reading Night Off.
Second.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and may it not snow on March twelfth.
Just not making it in July.
Okay. Routine matters, there's no minutes at this time. Mr. Conley, would you like to give us the budget update?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So, in this evening's packet was the January budget report, which essentially summarizes financial activity through the month of January. And as is been in the past, it's broken, the report's broken into two pages of our expense activity and our payroll activity. You know, not, again, not significant, you know, new information from this report, from the last month's report. You know, we're working our way through the winter season and definitely warrants us continuing to monitor all expenses closely. As we've been certainly discussing, some of the line items that are still within budget, although relatively tight at this point in the fiscal year are certainly, you know, teacher salaries, special education, our district tuition expenses, and sort of building and grounds maintenance, you know, contractual service line items. You know, I think there's no cause for significant, you know, concern, but just because of the tight nature of some of the line items, we're continuing to monitor those expenses closely. Certainly, the winter has been cooperating as we've kind of worked our way, you know, pretty close to the February, you know, vacation week, but we'll continue to monitor certainly all of these lines closely. As we've typically have done in the past, as our practice, we do encumber all utility expenses against the budget lines, and we monitor the USHDs and the costs on an ongoing basis, so we'll certainly know after the heating season if there'll be any savings to reapportion in the area of utilities. I do expect that there will be at this point, you know, a small amount of balances, balance in electricity and gas line items and so forth, but we'll continue to watch that closely. We've talked about the food service program each month. I'm happy to report that I got the January numbers a short time ago, just in time for this report, and the program did earn a profit a little over eleven thousand dollars in the month of January. That was a few thousand dollars higher than what we had projected for the month of January, so that is certainly positive news. I compared our performance through the month of January, this fiscal year to last year, and we're slightly better than where we were. So, and we were able to slightly break even last year, so hopefully that, you know, is a good sign for, as we move to the remainder of the school year. And overall, males sold each month are slightly up from compared to last year. That's been a positive trend that's been occurring. On average, across all the schools and throughout the district, they're about seven percent, you know, male sold per day are higher, which is good news. So, again, we'll continue to monitor these costs closely and work pretty closely with, you know, members of the food service program as well as with Char Wells as we approach the final quarter of the fiscal year. On the payroll side, really nothing significant to report. We once again have had a need to hire long-term substitutes at various times this school year to fill extended leave of absences. That is something we have grown accustomed to and is pretty typical. At this point, I don't think we'll have a need to or be in a position, we'll have to exceed our substitute budget, both our short and long-term substitute budget, but we'll continue to watch that closely. And really, payroll projections this time indicate that they'll be very close to our budgeted amounts. So, you know, I think through January, I think it's fair to say we're in, you know, solid financial standing, and we'll continue to see what the remaining of the winter months brings. There isn't a supplemental report about student activities, but is there any questions on the financial packet or report before I talk a little bit about the student activity report this evening?
No, but I bet you that profit's from Meatless Monday, isn't it?
So, believe it or not, I do have...
We have some data.
We have some data on that.
Good question. I forgot all about that. Exo, we have a little bit of data.
I already asked questions about this before. Meals were done.
We've done some, a couple, so we had that January seventh, which we were kind of marketing as kind of healthier, healthier option days over, and the first day on January seventh, you know, across the district, when you compared to what the male counts were on that day, that was the first day we kind of rolled it out shortly after the winter break. And the male counts, we're running certainly below what their average has been across the district. Probably, on average, about twenty-five or thirty less males sold on that day.
District-wide?
District, you know, per grade, per school.
Wow, wow.
So, we, they made some adjustments and certainly provide a greater variety of offerings and options. There were certainly meat options when they, when they rolled out some other, you know, healthier option days at the end of January, on January twenty-eighth, and then most recently on February fourth. And the numbers were much higher, which was good to see. In some cases, they were, you know, only maybe ten, you know, five or ten below what the, what the average has been at the schools, and then, and even in some, some cases, in particular at the, at the bachelor school in the most recent day, on February fourth, the male, the male counts were actually higher, about twenty, twenty or so higher than what they had been. And the middle school and the high school were running very, very close, within, within five or ten males. So, I think it's fair to say we're continuing to kind of watch it, but I think the idea is that we're gonna provide the variety and provide the option and try to meet all of the students' needs when we do these days into the future. And I think we certainly learned, I think it's fair to say, that the, you know, the food service program and the director learned a lot from the first couple that we rolled out in January and to make some of those tweaks in February, and we saw much higher numbers this past February fourth last week.
We also introduced a salad bar at the middle school.
We did, yeah.
Or they did?
We did.
Yeah, very, very recently.
Very recently, yeah.
We have some good numbers on that.
I think that started February sixth, I believe, that started, and, you know, already they're seeing, the first day, I believe it was, you know, twenty-five to thirty, males were sold through the salad bar, and that was similar to when we rolled out the high school, and that only, only can, hopefully will grow. So, that's, that's been received pretty well.
It's probably about as low as you can get it, though. The, I'm not sure a salad bar would work in the elementary schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's probably true.
Just because my, I just might, you know, my second graders would never have eaten salad as a cross-grader.
It's popular. It's popular here.
Oh, I totally believe it.
It really is.
With the staff as well.
My kindergarten second graders both liked salad.
Well, that does happen.
We have a full, so there are the meals we offer that get the maximum federal reimbursement, right?
Yeah, correct.
Do we have a vegetarian offering every day?
Um...
If not, could we do that without increasing expenses? I mean, I understand the Meatless Monday or whatever, but why don't we have a vegetarian option?
Well, you do with the salad bar.
Right, but is that considered a full?
That is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
But I mean, if it was another, I don't know if there's a way to do another...
I think we're moving towards trying to do that.
That's what we're kind of looking, I think Michael's used the word "option" a couple of times now, and I think we're looking at more, like, rather than kind of a mandate, Meatless mandate.
Yeah.
Might be a meatless option.
Yeah, rather than, you always see the chicken patty or the hamburger.
We're talking about like a black bean burger, like a salad hat on.
Almost a regular option, or a tuna melt or something, there's always an option there.
I mean, I think, in a window of roughly, you know, six weeks, right, that's about what it's been.
Yeah.
I think the progress we've made in that short period of time is encouraging. I don't think we're anywhere near where we would like to ultimately be, but I think we saw early on, and I think even in our early discussions, we were, you know, the idea of an option seemed to be a little bit more attractive anyway, but I think it's fair to say we'll kind of keep an eye on it. Michael's pretty, pretty hands-on with it, so I think, you know.
Yep, so we continue to work with Ms. McGovern, the food service director, the dietitian with Char Wells was there today, giving, giving some input, and we went down and met her, so we continue to work on it. Very good. So, the student activity report has been our practice, and again, in adherence to the student activity, you know, guidelines and procedures and newly adopted policy from a little over a year ago, we are reporting out quarterly the certified reconciled balances of the student activity accounts at each school. So, included in this packet is, are those certified balances, which, this is reflected through quarter two, which is through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. So, we generally need about thirty days to close everything out, to reconcile, to certify those balances. We get, you know, sometimes the bank statements don't come two or three weeks till the close of the quarter, so we kind of go through that process and reconcile everything and certify the balances, but we have a pretty good process in place between my office and, you know, Sabita Pai, who works, is an accountant in my office, does a really good job working with the school secretaries and the principals, and the town treasurer, to certify these balances, and she's a big, big part of this process, so I certainly appreciate her help and guidance. But what's in front of you tonight is the certified balances per school, and then the middle school and the high school where we have those sub-account balances of the active accounts that are endorsed each year, you can see those various sub-account balances per club on the subsequent pages in the memo at the high school and the middle school. So, I think things are rolling along pretty smoothly. I will make note, I'm sure you're noticing at the high school, and it shouldn't come to as a surprise, maybe the lower balance in the Maskers account, and that, we expected that, we talked about that back in the fall, that you can see that transition. It's not gonna go away, so none of these balances, all these performing arts like Notorious and Maskers and so forth, you know, the fundraising dollars at that club is performing, will go in, but you're seeing a shift of the ticket sales revenue.
That went to the revolving.
It's going to the revolving fund, and that's paying, you know, stipends and so forth. But, so you're seeing that happen, and that, that's starting to happen this year. That being said, if there's any other questions?
How do you, can you refresh my memory? How do you track the revolving fund? That's not something that you report to us on, kind of like the athletic?
So, the revolving fund is essentially the participation fee revenue and then the ticket sale revenue at the, during the night of the performances, and that is reconciled or tracks similarly to some of the other revolving accounts. Certainly, it works very, it functions very similar to the athletic, where we work closely with the directors involved, in this case, you know, Ms. Kane or Ms. Lister, and just like we do with Mr. Johnson, to confirm the number of participants, matches the revenue that's coming on the participation fees, and then, just like the gate receipts works very similar to the ticket sales, you know, the event happens, they're deposited, we get the breakdown per either tickets sold, or, you know, a lot of it's done online now, and we get a report from Ticket Stage, and we certify everything looks accurate and gets deposited, and then the expenses just flow through the, our accounting system, and the purchase orders are done for approved expenses that match what the budget was and so forth.
And how many revolving accounts do we have now?
Uh, we have, I would say there are about fifteen revolving accounts, so...
And on the school committee objectives, we had the mention of the fine arts subcommittee.
I was gonna mention that.
Are we going to, do we think we need to create that at some point in time with a revolving account now, up and running?
It is interesting because on the athletic facilities, I mean, the athletic subcommittee is updated every month on the status of the revolving account, what our balance is gonna be, what our balance isn't going to be, what funds are being expended for. Do we have funds to, for example, that's the first place we look to say, "Do we have funds to do the scoreboard and the dugouts at the softball field?" And there we didn't. Because it's an activity-related revolving account, to me, it makes sense to have a subcommittee. It doesn't have to meet maybe as often as athletics does, maybe it does, but to, so there are school committee members, administrators are where anyway, but also, you know, I would assume maybe you have Mrs. Lister and Mrs. Kane would be members, you know, so everybody is on the same page in terms of how the money, what kind of money's coming in and what kind of money's being spent. I think it makes sense to have that kind of subcommittee. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
I agree.
I agree.
I think I agree too.
So, I don't know how we'd go about, we'd have to draw up a charge for it and...
Do you remember, well, I don't know how far it goes.
Athletic subcommittee was around long before I was...
It's been a while.
I'm sure we could.
Yeah, we could look at how it was set up. I mean, it just makes, it just does make sense, though, to have that.
Is there, is there an impact on staff members who are involved or from a, I know they're already getting stipends for the work they're doing, but does being part of a committee impact their compensation at all?
We have Mr. Johnson, Ms. LePret, our members.
I mean, it just, I think it would, it might be helpful for me to provide a little bit more guidance if I were over, at some point, receive like, what's the vision from the school committee on what, what are the objectives of the fine arts subcommittee that aren't being addressed through an update that Michael provides on the report? I guess if, maybe that's something to think about. I'm not saying necessarily tonight, but if what's the objective of the committee, and then it might help me to...
I guess for me, we don't, the committee isn't gonna see these numbers unless Michael reports on them.
Right, and you don't report on revolving.
Like, I come, I come in or...
Which committee, the fine arts subcommittee?
I'm saying, for the athletic subcommittee, either Diane or I can come in and say, you know, "Michael gave an update on the budget. We're gonna have a three thousand dollar balance. We're in trouble." You know, we came in and we explained how we couldn't pay for the dugouts. We didn't have enough funds. We're not gonna be involved in that, or we're not gonna hear that unless Michael makes a report.
Yeah.
That's the other thing. He can make a report every month on...
Yeah, no, I think it's possible. The logistics of it would be a little tricky, just because if we had some...
Right.
If what?
You have staff that's in...
Right.
Right.
You know, and after school is the time they would meet, and that's often, you know, because I would think if, if a subcommittee were to be formed, I would think you'd want to have at least an Allison Kane and a Carla Lister. I mean, it's not impossible, it's not a hurdle to be, but it's just, you know, maybe if it's, if it's a committee that meets three or four times a year, we could schedule those meetings at a time when it's less...
Yeah, it certainly makes...
Problematic with the scheduling of their plays and such.
It certainly makes sense to, that it wouldn't be as frequent as the athletic subcommittee because the athletics are at full...
Seasonal, yeah.
And they're at full...
Correct.
Activity all year.
Right, entire year.
And, and it's a little more seasonal.
So, because of that, and if the committee sees fit to, you know, subscribe to that, then it may, it may be easier with the scheduling.
And I just think it's another way for us to show support for that side of the, of the student activities too, so...
I mean, I see it as kind of an overview thing, so if, if you met four times a year and you have Allison Kane and Carla Lister part of it, they could bring the committee up to date on what's going on. In addition, everybody knows about the musical, but what are some of the other things they're doing, and then we can bring that to the committee. And I do think, you know, I second what Rich said, and we do support the arts, but it just can bring more of that public.
Why don't I frame a little something maybe for you all to consider at a future meeting, and we'll see if that kind of fits the bill of what you think the need might...
I've seen a lot of the committees have sort of a decision-making piece to them. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is there any decision-making that a subcommittee like that would have around the revolving account, or, you know, like Mel was saying, we spend the budget for the athletic subcommittee, we look at the ways we spend that, make decisions about it.
Yep.
Is that, would that, I'm trying to piece that together, because it's one thing to be informative, it's another to make decisions.
That's a good point, because it could change the way it functions now, where, you know, they, Allison or Carla or whoever would make a request to Michael now, saying, "We want to spend this money on this," and Michael basically says, "Yeah, we can afford that," whereas a lot of times with the athletic subcommittee, Michael, it comes to us, and we say, "Yeah, that makes sense. We should expend that," or "We shouldn't expend that." Or, for example, the whole...
I think you've taken the feedback from the administration on whether or not that's appropriate expenditure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On what we can afford.
I'm not saying that it's necessary. I'm actually saying the opposite. I'm not sure if there's any decision-making.
Right, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, more advisory.
I mean, I will say...
Because it's a little bit different, it's a little different. Again, it's the same thing with it goes on year-round, the athletics, it's, it's different in terms of what the financial needs are.
Right. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah, I'm just, I just haven't seen, and maybe I'm wrong, that there's a subcommittee just for being informative in nature. So, that's, would be my argument to think about it a little bit. If it's, if it's just informative, there's other ways to inform than having...
Would funds in this, in the revolving account be used for improvements in any of the facilities, or as part?
It could be.
Like, if you wanted to improve the sound system or lighting system?
Or the staging, yeah.
I think that's generally, when we bring something to the athletic subcommittee, it's for an improvement or a special one-time expense, where there may or may not be a residual balance for that, because everything else is just what's appropriated with the, either through the salaries or the team expenses that are reflected in the budget book, that everyone kind of knows it's, these are happening, these are almost fixed in a lot of ways. And it's when you have, you know, you're looking at, did revenue or gate receipts do extraordinary in one year that could warrant a special expense or improvement?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I think, Diana, you're right, that we definitely don't want to create a level of bureaucracy that we don't need. But again, I really go back to the idea of also showing that support from the...
Yeah, I do, I do. I would even personally love to support the fine arts, but I just... The Fine Arts, but I just.
Yep.
Trying to understand the objectives of the Subcommittee.
I mean, the other thing you could do is have a quarterly report from someone within the department that, so you have, you know, you have Carla, you have Allison, you have the band director, you, you know, and they come once a quarter, they report what they're doing, I mean, that's the other thing you could do.
To have that information to, I don't think given that structure, there's enough, those people have the information to make.
It's a different.
An athletic report. I think, I think Michael's doing that with his quarterly report.
Well, I mean, is it just financial, is it more than financial?
Yeah.
Well, that's why, I was, I was saying the quarterly would be more than financial, it would be an overview of what's going on.
If you're okay with, why don't I take a stab at framing something for you to think about and, and work off of as a draft and see if it fits where you all are as a committee? We haven't had one for, I don't think, ever, so if we're, if we take a methodical approach to it here and come through, come up with a draft on, I'll try to give you some sort of a framework to then work off of? Okay.
I think the other thing to, to do is to see what kind of interest there is from the leaders of that department. Finance department too, you know, they think.
And I can come up with a suggested membership and.
Yeah.
We'll do a standard two members of the school committee to, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Very good. The only other, the only other update I had, just, just more of information, is we are, are at work this week completing the FY20 preliminary budget and the budget book that goes along with that. So that our targeted date was February 15th, which is this Friday, right before the February break. So we anticipate being able to deliver the FY20 preliminary budget book to the school committee members on this Friday to, which we'll give you about two weeks prior to the presentation to kind of review that information.
Will it be made public at that time also?
Um, I can certainly post it.
I mean, shouldn't it?
It's the committee's desire.
Once it's out to committee members, I think it almost has to be public, doesn't it? It is public, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm happy to, to post that, you know, via the website and.
And that will show the deficits based on the current revenue projections, et cetera?
So.
How will it work?
We're still, the finance planning team in some ways is a little, we don't really have a, maybe a more of a firm number like we have had in the past.
Okay.
So the budget book doesn't necessarily list a, a budget gap, as it may have had in the past in the kind of the opening narrative.
Okay.
It more reflects what our percentage recommendation is as an administration to the school committee and what is included in that and what are the drivers and obviously all, there's a lot of detail in there that could, that could spend in the past.
Okay.
I expect the March 4th presentation, public presentation will be the, maybe the first time we'll be able to sort of announce where, where we stand in relation to the, the finance planning team and the, you know, the guideline. We actually think, you know, the Friday's meeting, you know, we might get a little bit more concrete information than we've just had to date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, there's no staffing at this time, so next is bids and donations.
Bids and donations, okay.
Take it away, Mr. McGowan.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $25 from Christopher and Margaret Kanes for the North Reading High School Track Team, and I apologize to the, to them if I've mispronounced the name.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,075 from the Friends of Hornet Productions for the eighth grade trip to Mount Waukesus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,200 from Andrew and Kim Fabrizio through the Fidelity Charitable Donor Advised Fund for the purpose of purchasing 24 new team hockey equipment bags for the North Reading High School Boys Hockey Team.
Second.
That's very generous.
Very.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to be used toward the Kimball Farm Field Trip at the Hood School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just got to look, I got to look.
I'll do something.
It's not my fault, Cindy. He's the wise guy, not me. I'm trying to make it easy for you.
All right, Subcommittee updates. The Budget Subcommittee met on January 29th. Mr. Buckley and Mr. McGowan, would you like to report on that?
So, yeah, we saw the preliminary workings of the administrative team on what the budget book is going to look like, and, you know, we just asked a lot of questions. We asked for a couple of things to be moved from one column to another based on, you know, the committee's comments in the past about what we want to prioritize and just trying to figure out, you know, the best way to try to accomplish the budget. So it's a work in progress that will take a few months to do.
Yeah.
Okay. The Finance Planning Team met on January 30th, where myself and Mr. Buckley were there. Go ahead, you know how much I love to talk.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were, we were working on the memorandum of, of understanding, whatever we were calling it, about.
The fluid paper.
Trying to, you know, formalize a little bit more about, you know, how the finance planning team works, how the budget is built. We started looking at revenue numbers a bit. I don't know, I mean, that, that was the main thing, we were, we worked on that memorandum a lot to try to make sure we were all in.
A lot of wordsmithing.
Agreement.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that was the bulk of the meeting, was doing that. I mean, I think, I, I feel like the atmosphere has been.
Better.
A lot more positive the last couple of meetings. I feel like, you know, we've talked a lot about how, even when we talk about it's town budget, it's school budget, that, you know, the school and the municipal are all part of the same town, and so, I mean, it was, it was good, I mean, it was a good discussion and the reality is our, our committee has changed over the last couple of years and, you know, the select board is going to be having some of the same changes in the next couple of years, so it'd be good to have some of the work that people have done in the past put down into a memorandum so that the next people can pick that up.
Kind of memorialize it.
Yeah, there was potentially some good news on the insurance, where they budget a certain percentage, but they feel it's going to come in closer to like 3%.
I agree or not.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I think there was some optimism, yeah.
Oh, sorry. A lot lower than they, or, I don't know, I guess, so, so that was good. And that's pretty much the highlight that I took out of that, so.
Yeah, can I just ask, in the discussion on the memorandum of understanding, has there been any talk about other towns and whether they have a sort of framework like that in place or is?
Most towns don't have a.
Most towns don't, finance planning team.
Don't have a finance planning team.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to memorialize is really, what is a finance planning team? How does it work and, you know, how do we, how do we get, rather than just fighting about, you know, between boards and, I mean, again, at the end of the day, all the money comes from the town. It is, we are one town, and so it's good to, you know, have the elected officials be able to sit down in the same meeting and prioritize needs as opposed to just looking at what you want, so.
All right, the Athletic Facilities Committee met on.
Sorry, that committee no longer exists, Madam Chairwoman. I'll pass over that.
Okay.
That item.
I was just going to say, ah, we just dissolved that.
Yes.
The Policy Subcommittee met on January 30th, and I'll leave that to Ms. Boutwell and Mr. McGowan.
Well, in addition to the items we had before the committee earlier, actually, that took up most of the meeting. I think we were going to, we were going to work another section, but.
We had an aggressive goal, but we didn't get to, we were on section E, I think it is now.
I think that's right, so.
Those were the legacy ones that you had put aside from.
The ones that we reviewed tonight.
That we reviewed.
Yes, right.
Oh, yeah.
Those were the ones that.
Those were what we tackled in the last meeting primarily.
Yeah, and we, and it took up all of our time.
Well, that was a lot for one meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, we've been trying.
And that's even, even with, even with Mr. Bernard coming well-prepared for those items, it took us a lot of wordsmithing, but, yeah.
It's good.
And the Evaluation Subcommittee, we just met today and we pretty much discussed that at the time, so.
What we discussed.
Enough of that.
One question on a future business, it's not a Subcommittee, but just ahead, town meeting, looks like it was play, it was set on a day that we have a school committee meeting?
It is, June the 10th.
So are we, are we going to move that meeting? There were some things on the agenda.
That's something you need to, you're going to need to decide. I haven't gotten a firm, I haven't gotten a definite that town meeting is June 10th. I was only asked.
I saw it posted and I think.
Okay, I was only asked to see if it was available, the school was available.
Yeah, I saw it posted as something, I mean, it was on, I did that, that update to my calendar where every town meeting now is on my calendar.
The, the committee typically meets on that town meeting day anyway, but.
Yeah, we have.
On your true schedule, that would be the elementary school improvement plans.
Correct.
We could either do them in one night or.
And the CPAC is coming and some retirees we wanted to honor, I think I had listed there.
We usually do the elementaries on those nights, yeah, when the principals are here.
I don't know if we need to schedule a different meeting and do it later on?
It's February. We'll get to it.
I'm just telling you, looking ahead.
Subcommittee schedules for the upcoming CPIC, CIPC, sorry, February 13th at 4:30 at the Town Hall in Room 5.
Can I stop you on that?
Sure.
Diana, where, where are we on CIPC in terms of their prioritizing the projects?
We just, the last meeting we had, we did our site visits.
Okay.
We went out and took a look at everything. So prioritization is coming up probably pretty quickly.
All right, thanks.
But not yet.
Okay.
Finance Planning Team meets February 15th at 8:15 a.m. in the Superintendent's Conference Room. The Substance Abuse Coalition meets February 26th at 10 a.m. in the police station. The Athletic Subcommittee meets February 26th at 12:30 at the Superintendent's Conference Room. And the Policy Subcommittee meets February 28th at 4 p.m. in the Superintendent's Conference Room. And NORCAM meets February 28th as well at 7 o'clock at the NORCAM office. And with that, I'll go over to Mr. Bernard for the administration, administrative report.
Madam Chairman, thank you. So I, I did share with you a couple of things tonight. The first is, it was mentioned earlier, but the cast and crew of, of the Addams Family, which was a middle school production, and Ms. Carla Lister really are, to be extended, a very sincere congratulations for a job well done. They had some very nice performances of the play on February 1st and 2nd, and a lot of good hard work went on. Some of you I know commented already and saw the show, but I just think it's nice to publicly acknowledge them as well.
And, Mr., and in addition to Ms. Lister, there's three or four other staff who are involved.
There are, she's the lead director, but yeah, they have, Joanna Callahan helps out from the middle school, Dana Sinnerati, middle school teacher, yeah.
And, because I just want to point out, because, an impressive number, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I think someone might have said about 100 students involved this year, it's, it's, yeah, pretty wide, wide-ranging.
Yeah.
I just want to say that I went to the second show on Saturday, and at the end, there was a lot of recognition from the eighth graders to Ms. Lister.
Nice.
Vice versa.
Nice.
But I, as a resident and as a parent in this town, I was really moved because the way that the eighth grader spoke about her and the staff with such, with words I wouldn't envision, you know, an eighth grader to use and the compassion that they used, to say like they loved and adored her, and then for her, Ms. Lister, to recognize the eighth grade parents, ask them to stand for raising such amazing kids. It was just a really proud moment to be like, there's some great parents and kids in this town.
There are.
I was there as well, that was a great moment. Very heartfelt, I think, on the side.
And I literally choked up like a sap.
Yeah.
But it was pretty moving.
She's pretty special.
The thing I love about Carla Lister and Allison Kane is that they are preeminent taskmasters. You don't get away without doing what you're supposed to do, but they're also beloved by 99.97 of the students.
Their shows are about, yeah, they're very much.
Shows are about the kids.
They really are, yeah, I mean, that's been pretty, pretty constant for the years that I've worked with them.
Yep.
So thank you for sharing those thoughts, I know that they would appreciate that.
And just to follow up on that one, I mean, I said it before about the 100 kids in there, I mean, there were so many parents that I saw that were there, they were just so proud of their kids just because they had a role, you know, and there were a lot of, I mean, again, I'm a parent of a child of special needs, I saw a lot of special needs students that had roles in the, in the production, which, again, I just, I think it's great that it's so inclusive, which is, you know, something that a lot of schools don't have, so.
Didn't I say your son has a role in an upcoming performance?
Yes, he's, he's got a role in The Little Mermaid at the little school, so.
Exactly, it's going to be awesome.
Yes.
And then, Madam Chairman, the only other thing I had for the committee is I attached a copy of my winter newsletter, which is, which went out last week.
Must read every quarter.
I know some of you. Would you get that to Jerry, he always.
Yeah, he, Jerry, Jerry loves.
Usually.
He went nuts about your newsletters.
Some of you get it as part of my email distribution, but I know not all of you do, so I wanted to make sure you had it. It's also on the website. That's all I had, Madam Chairman.
Okay, there's two other pieces of correspondence.
There are, yeah.
There's a memorandum from the town administrator in regards to the Facilities Master Plan Committee. They're wanting to form a committee that has the select board, a community planning commission, the Department of Public Works Historic District Commission, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Finance Committee, and School Committee. And the terms will run through June 30th, 2020, with the charges as fully to advise the Department of Public Works on the development of a master plan for town facilities and future town facility needs, provided that the committee consults with the town's public safety departments prior to finalizing its recommendations. And so I would like to open up a discussion as to who would like to possibly sit on this board. I know Mel's jumping at the seams already.
We tried to appoint Ms. Boutwell, we're supposed to hear, but other.
In a sense, yeah.
Other people said that was not the appropriate.
I was going to say, as, I'd be happy to do it, the only thing, challenge for me is I cannot do morning meetings, so if it's a morning type of group that meets.
Well, and that's, that's the challenge, we don't know what the.
Yeah, we don't know.
Anticipated meeting.
So I don't want to say, yes, I can, and then I'm unable to, from a feasibility standpoint.
It could be a during-the-day meeting too, given the makeup of the committee.
I can do during the day, I can't do morning.
Oh, morning, okay.
Like first thing, I, I just, I have to drop my kids off at school, get them out. there.
Schedules are worked around people's availability, I would hope.
Well, then I think, did, uh, Janine, did you, did you express interest too or?
Well, I, I thought that it would be good for you where you're on the CPIC.
CIPIC, yeah.
Already that you, you know, you kind of have knowledge of it.
They go hand in hand.
No, I'm happy to do it and then hopefully I can weigh in on the times of the meeting.
Yeah, and if you.
Just if I hit that challenge, I just want to come back.
Then I would be interested in it, so.
We, we could have appointed her last?
I know, we could have.
The other thing that.
I appreciate you taking my own opinion into consideration.
Okay. That's it, no. We, after we, after we nominate Diana, I can bring up the other thing.
Well, do we want to do a nomination now or do we want to wait to find out?
You might not find out.
It would seem to me that the people that get appointed are going to have to work together to come up with a meeting.
No one's going to have the perfect schedule, I mean.
That's right.
And realistically, just to avoid drop-off is a reasonable request, so.
Yeah.
That's fine, yes.
I'll nominate Ms. Boutwell to be the school committee member for the facilities master plan committee, a term which runs through June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The second thing is, it's not really an active committee right now, but at some point it may have to become active again, and that's the secondary school building committee. So I don't know if you want to wait until the end of my term to appoint a new member. I'm just opening up to let members know that that, that appointment will be available so you can think about if you want to, because there are going to be meetings at some point.
There are.
Once we get to closing, this is closing out the project.
How about we do it when you go to step away?
Okay. But I just wanted to open it up so people can consider it.
Also something we could, we could probably do in the reorganization.
Yeah.
In May, so.
Right, but that's going to be, that's going to be open.
And that nomination comes with a subpoena, right?
The what? No, no.
But thank you for thinking about.
I avoided that.
Did you?
Yes.
Oh, they must have watched the meeting.
I'd have to give a deposition.
And then the other correspondence, I will let you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So just a little bit of good news. It's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's a, I thought it was important for you to see that, um, the district through Dr. Daley, the assistant superintendent, applied for and was awarded a grant by the state in the amount of $3,770 to assist in our curriculum writing to accommodate the implementation of the new history and social sciences curriculum framework, which is to be introduced in middle schools and high schools starting in September. So this work, this, this grant will be used to fund stipends for the people that will be charged with working on, on the curriculum development. So again, I think it's a grant awarded to the district and I thought it was something that you should be aware of.
Very nice.
Very nice.